Welcome back. You are listening to the Loving Liberty Network and this is the Liberty Mom Show. Liberty Moms are the original Secretaries of Defense. We are the real defenders of the home front. And we are there when it comes to defending our families and our communities. I am your host today, Delaine England. We're so happy to have you join us. We have an amazing, super liberty mom, Nicole Mason with us today. And I am so thrilled to have you with us, Nicole. Quick introduction, Nicole is the president of Utah Parents United. She has five amazing children and a great husband and she is, she has really great family. And she has really been on the forefront of fighting for education, fighting for our children to have a good education for, would you say, the last three or four years, Nicole?
Yeah, I spent two years in Nevada. So we lived in Nevada. And I was there for about two years doing that and then moved here and have been involved the last two years since we've moved here.
Okay, great. So we're so happy to have you join us today, Nicole. And the reason that we want to talk about today is we would like to talk about, I want to kind of set this up. So you and I both live in Davis School District. And we worked together on the See My Smile campaign. That's why I really got to know you the best and so impressed. Very articulate, very intelligent, really know how to make things happen. And you're very well organized, extremely organized. And it was so fun working with you there. And then you have just continued on. And I want listeners to understand in Davis School District, I guess we had more than one issue. I only know about one issue, but the Department of Justice, the DOJ has taken over Davis School District. Explain what, I mean, just very briefly, what happened there? Why did the DOJ take over Davis School District?
Sure. So from my high level perspective as an outsider looking in, what I see that happened is that there were some racial incidents, that there were issues of racism that were documented. And parents complained about those to the district. So like, hey, this is happening to my child. Did this happen? And that they weren't addressed and they weren't appropriately handled. And those parents then had to escalate the issue, you know, because it was not handled. And so they had to then escalate that to the Department of Justice. Or eventually it got to the Department of Justice and the Department of Justice came in and investigated and said, yes, there are, there are issues of racism here. They were not addressed. They were not handled appropriately. And so because Davis School District, you did not handle these appropriately, we're going to come in. And now, you know, there was a lawsuit and then there had to be a settlement. And so as a result, the Department of Justice with that settlement has issued terms that affect all stakeholders in the Davis School District. And there, we have no recourse now as a result of that settlement.
Yeah, thank you so much. Excellent explanation, Nicole. And one of the problems is it is a super violation of privacy for the students and their families. Because now all of our private information is being shared with the DOJ. Whether we have nothing to do with it or not, I mean, even families have absolutely nothing to do at all with any of the incidences. All of that, our private information is now at the access of the DOJ. So it's not a very good situation.
No. And what's, what's interesting about that is through, as we've been researching this to find out, okay, what, what really is going on here? Because the public wasn't privy to what was happening. The, the contract with the Department of Justice or the negotiator, the settlement was negotiated with, from what I understand, one board member in the absence of board approval. So meaning there was no board vote, there was no board discussion in an open meeting. There was no opportunity for public input to say, hey, yes, we think this is good settlement terms or this, this isn't. So there was no board vote. And as a result, the Davis School District is sending all of the information and everyone in the district. And there's no opportunity for parents to opt out of that. And so you just think medical information, anything that's tied to your student ID information, anything that the school has can be sent to the Department of Justice. And so they have everything on you and your kid and, and there's no opportunity to opt out of that.
Yeah, which is a huge violation. So recently you went to the legislature, they had an inter-meeting, which means in Utah, our legislature meets 45 days in January to March. And then once a month, our legislature meets and discusses bills and makes plans. And they meet once a month for legislative action. And so you recently went to the Education Committee and you testified. And you did an excellent job. So tell us about that. I thought it was really interesting how so many different organizations and people from different walks came together on this. So tell us about your testimony there at that education meeting.
Sure. So I was asked to report basically on abuses of power by individual school board members. And the interesting part about Utah Parents United is that we are able to network across the state, you know, across 44 different school districts. So we were able to talk to parents in school districts throughout the state and have them report as well on what they experienced. And I don't know if you want me to talk about my specific experience.
Yes, please.
Led up to it. So, so what happened was I went to a school board meeting in July of 2021. And there were so many things that were violations of the Open Public Meetings Act. You know, the doors being locked, saying that you had to show ID, refused entry because the meeting was already in progress. You know, being required.
Nicole, talk about those things because those are really important issues. Going to, going to a school board meeting, that is the right of everyone. I don't even have to have children in public school to be able to go to a public meeting, a school board meeting and talk about how they're spending my money, what is happening in the schools, how it is affecting our society and our community. Those are really important issues. So when you got there, you were asked to have ID shown?
Well, there's a sign on the door that says, you know, you must present ID to enter. And the door was locked and you have to ring a doorbell and be entered. So even there, there's an issue because Oklahoma, you know, it says, this is an open public meeting. Anyone can come in. You shouldn't have to like ring a doorbell and say, can I, can I come in?
Get permission, yes.
Yeah, exactly. So there, you know, that's kind of a gray area. But there, the bigger issue is there are some major rights violations in terms of policy being applied arbitrarily. First, no one should be required to present ID to attend an open public meeting. Right there, that is a rights violation. And second, that it was applied arbitrarily. Some parents had to show ID and some didn't. I didn't have to show ID, but another parent did when she came in. So, you know, there, this is something you could bring the ACLU in on as well. And, and they would have a hate day with, with how this was conducted or is being conducted. That you, though, there were just a lot of things that were not handled correctly and continue to not be handled correctly, denying me access because the meeting was already in progress. That is a violation of Oklahoma. You can't say, oh, sorry, the meeting already started. So you have to stay in the hall. That's, that's a rights violation. They can't, they, I, in theory, they should not be able to do that according to Oklahoma. But they didn't. And, and then.
And why? The question, the question that goes through my mind, yeah, I've been to tons of school board meetings. I've never had that happen, but I think, why? Why did they not want you to go in there? What was the point of that? I don't understand because you just, you're not like going in and joining a roundtable. You're not disturbing them by entering the room because all the chairs are in a certain area that are apart from them. You're really a huge distance. So just to walk into the room and go sit down wouldn't disturb the meeting or disturb anyone in the meeting. So.
Well, and if you look at the Legislative Interim Committee meeting, everyone's walking in and out the whole meeting, like legislators.
Exactly, all the time.
So people, it's standard that you can walk in and out of a public.
It is standard, very well said.
There is no, nothing that says that you cannot join a meeting that's already in progress. So that right there, you know, and I've asked why, oh, sorry, the meeting's already started. So anyway, then the next thing that happens is I walk in and the chairs are all three feet apart, which is so uncomfortable, like, because there all my friends are sitting three feet apart, like, no, no, no. Because the COVID protocols had all been ended. So there was no reason for the chairs to be spaced three feet apart. I verified that up and down that there were no COVID protocols. Other board members said, nope, that was not a board decision. I don't know why the chairs were spaced three feet apart. Anyway, so I scooped my chair next to my friends and all my friends, we just scoot our chairs together, like any normal meeting room would be, you can sit.
Exactly. And like any normal person would do because you come with your friends and you want to sit by them.
Right. So, uh, so then the next thing I know, a board member walks in and says, you have to move your chairs so they're three feet apart. And I, you know, red flags going off. There's nothing in Oklahoma that says I have to sit three feet apart from my neighbor. And Oklahoma, sorry, is the Open Public Meetings Act, which basically is meant to protect the people and say, this is a public meeting here or the rights of the people. So that, um, so just looking at it in terms of what are, what, what do you have a right to when you go to an open public meeting? And it, all your rights do not need to be enumerated, right?
Exactly, exactly.
There's, there's nothing that says that you have to sit three feet from your neighbor, right? Anyway, so we, that wasn't a board decision as verified by the board members. And the, anyway, he comes in, says, you have to scoot your chairs three feet apart. And we say, well, why? And he says, it's the rules. Okay, I know the rules pretty well. Can you tell me what rule says that I have to sit three feet from my neighbors? And he said, it's rules. If you don't want to follow the rules, then I'm going to have the gentleman back there escort you out of the room. Well, the gentleman back there was an armed police officer. So under threat of being escorted out of a public meeting because I was sitting too close to my neighbor, we scooted our chairs back in place. But I knew that there was something wrong and I just started taking notes because I was like, no, this is, this is not right. There are so many things about this situation that are not right. So after the meeting, I go out and I talked to the armed police officer. And I say, hey, uh, can you tell me like, what's going on? Like, why was, why were the doors locked? Why was I refused access into the workshop meeting? Why were the chairs spaced three feet apart? Why was I said that I needed to sit three feet apart from my neighbor when all the COVID protocols are gone? And he said, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. And you could tell he was really uncomfortable. And I said, well, the, these are violating my rights as an individual. Like what, what, what am I supposed to do? And he said, and this was like the key part that, that I always say that everything rests on. He said, the code is vague and so they can do whatever they want. Now, not everyone abuses the code, but because the code is vague, there are people who have found that they can execute their personal agenda or get away with things because the code is vague. And I said, well, what recourse do I have? And he said, your only recourse is to file a complaint with the civil court. Now, what parent or citizen is going to go through the process to file a complaint with the civil court? So, you know, fast forward, we were asked to present to the legislature on abuses of power. And that was kind of the, what I said was, look, we were told the code is vague. And so because the code is vague, the government or school boards are able to infringe on our rights. And, and Officer Cooper, do whatever they want. So that was our appeal was, look, the government is meant to protect the people and the constitution, the people's rights. The Constitution is meant to protect the people from abuses of power by the government. And this happens to be a vague area where the people are not protected. So we're asking you to follow the pattern of the Constitution to put accountability in place so that there's a system of checks and balances on school boards. Because in the absence of that, they are abusing their positions. Not everyone, but there are some people who are abusing their positions. So that's kind of everything in a nutshell.
Yes. And you know, I just want to remind everyone that in, in Utah, I don't know everyone's, every state's constitution. But I, I know that they are very similar. And Utah's Constitution, as usual, it's as it should be, specifically says that education, the education system is there as a support for the parents. It is there to support parents in the education, that the, the role of educating our children is a parental role. It is a parental responsibility and a parental right. And that public education is there to support that. And, and we can use that if we desire to, to support our parental rights and our parental stewardship. And so what's been happening is what I have seen across the nation is very much a, a usurping of that power and saying, we, it's our job to educate the children of the state. And we're going to do that. And the parents are subservient to that. They don't even have a right to know what we're even doing or what's going on. And so that has really been an issue. And so that is a place where you noticed, you saw that this usurpation of power over our children and over the parents of the children and literally violating our personal rights. So you just did such a great job and you did an excellent job testifying in committee. So where do we stand now? You testified in committee. So the, the legislature, what was the point of this committee meeting and bringing up this issue? What was the reason that they had people come in and testify?
Well, I think they acknowledged that there was a problem. So they saw a pervasive problem across the state, that it's not an isolated incident in one district, that there are multiple incidents in multiple districts. And they said, okay, yeah, we, there is a problem with the code and it is being abused by some people. So we need to fix it. So there's some wonderful people who got together and said, okay, yes, we are going to update the code. And so Senator Bramble, I believe, is running the bill. And he's agreed to update, I believe, existing code so that it provides a system of accountability and an ethics review committee for school boards. So they're in the process of running it through interim. So it's a really great thing because it means that they heard us, that they recognize that there's a problem and that they're trying to fix it. And so I, I just feel so excited about that, that this is a, a chance where we are reigning in the government. So it's so exciting.
This involvement is paying off. It's working.
Yes.
And what I loved about this meeting ever so much was the different people and the different perspectives of the people that were testifying. You had James Evans, who was a prior legislator. And also he, what else is, he was the Chair of the Republican Party. And he's involved in some other organization. But, and I can't think of the name of it, but he's, he's very active. He's a moderate Republican. And then we had Juanita Williams, who is.
Janetta Williams.
Janetta, thank you so much. Janetta Williams, yes, because I want to pronounce her name correctly. Janetta Williams, thank you, who is the head of the NAACP in Utah. So she testified on some problems. And then you did. And then there were also some other parents who testified. And what was really amazing is that this isn't a partisan issue. This isn't a minor segment of society or just a certain group of people. This, it showed that there is this concern about this abuse of power that is, runs the gamut. It is of all walks of life, all races, all political and philosophical agendas. It really was very encompassing. Did you not find that?
Yeah, it, it was awesome. And then you had school board members who were, or former school board members who were also saying, yep, I was on the school board. I saw it. I, I was a part of this. I witnessed it. So I, I was just grateful that we could illustrate the issue. And that the issue was the code and that the code needed to be updated. And that we all saw the solution to the problem as updating the code. We all were asking for the same thing, systems of checks and balances, rein in this abuse of power. And so it was nice to be able to articulate what we saw as the solution to the problem.
And, and did it ever so well. And you know, I think this is also a really important part of this situation too, is at the legislature, in the state legislature, doesn't really like to get involved in education issues very much. Because they say, you know, that's, we'll leave that up to the fourth branch of government in Utah, to the state school board and the local school boards. We want them to be able to govern themselves. We don't want to impose our will and state law on top of them very often. But this was very evident in this committee meeting, how important it is that we have state law that governs consistently across the board and to protect our individual rights, to protect students and parents and to stop this accumulation of power and abuse of power. Because when you've got one person, a state school board chair saying, I'm going to make the rules. These are my rules. I'm making them. I am also going to not only make the rules, I'm going to enforce the rules and I'm going to be the judge on whether you've obeyed the rules or not and how that is articulated and how it is carried out. That, we need to break up that power. That is a very, it's, we're just ripe for abuse of power. And, okay, so Nicole, you have demonstrated how effective, when parents get involved and do something, they can actually affect a change and do something. I also think it's important for every person in the United States, wherever you live, to realize this could happen in your state. Are you, do you agree with me?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the fact that it wasn't an ice, it's not an isolated incident. It was in every district across the state, as you saw by testimony from parents across the state. So it's not like it's just happening in Utah, where one district, all across Utah, it's probably everywhere. And if I can just give my heartfelt opinion on the matter, it's the reason that I was able to talk to the legislature is because I was involved and I knew what my rights were. And I understood, at least to some extent, what the law was and what my rights were within the law. If you don't know what your rights are, you don't know when they're being violated. If someone else goes into a public meeting and the guy at the door says, sorry, you can't come in because it's already in progress. Some people might say, oh, okay, that must be how it is. And they might just walk away and say, okay, yeah, I can only go in if I'm early or I can't attend the meeting if it's in progress, which is, which isn't true. And so if you don't know what your rights are, you don't know when they're being taken away. And that's how we get this government creep where we have fewer rights, less privileges, you know, that there's more control. So that's like my goal is to help people get more involved and understand more what their rights are so that they can speak up in a, in the right way, you know, and not, you know, I'm not advocating for any, you know, anything extreme, just that you can say, hey, wait a second, I don't think that's right. That's not an Oklahoma. And then you can articulate that to your legislator and say, my rights are being violated. Can you help me out here? So I, I just think it's so important that you have to know what your rights are because otherwise you can't speak up for yourself or your children.
Excellent. So well said, Nicole. That is so important. If we don't know our rights, we don't know to stand up for them. We don't know they're being violated. If we don't understand the, the original intent and the format of this amazing Constitution that we have and the principles, we must know, know the principles in them so that we can stand up for them and we can preserve them and protect them. At this point, we need to restore them. But that is so well said and I couldn't agree with you more. And since you brought that up, I thought I will just take a second to let everyone know that there are numerous opportunities to take a Constitution class so that you can learn more about your rights in an, in a really organized fashion. So it's just not hit and miss. And if you go to freedomslikeevent@gmail.com, if you want to email that email, then we will let you know numerous options. There's five or six different kinds of Constitution classes that you can take with different, you know, different aspects or just kind of different emphasis in different ways. And so there's a myriad of options and a lot of them can be taken via Zoom. So you can take them from the privacy and the convenience and comfort of your own home. But there are at least five or six that I know off the top of my head. And so if anybody is interested in taking a class, these are all free and they're fantastic. Freedoms with an S, freedomslikeevent@gmail.com. And then we can let you know, we'll email you back and let you know with links, all the different options that you have so that, that you can get more involved and, and get more educated so that you can get involved. I think one of the reasons people do hesitate getting involved, Nicole, is they feel like they don't know what to say. They don't know how to get involved and they don't know what to do. But that is the beauty of America and our process. It is designed for citizens to get involved.
Yes, yes. And actually, that's why we started Utah Parents United was because we recognized, like, a lot of people don't know who their school board rep is. They don't know who their house rep is, who their senator is, their state school board member. And they don't even know how to find out. Oh, they don't know when the school board meetings are. They don't know what's being discussed in the school boards. They don't know what curriculums be, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so it can be kind of overwhelming, like, well, I don't even know how to go to a school board meeting. You know, let alone what to say, you know, how do you? So we just decided that we needed to help parents by developing a parent support group to say, okay, this is who your school board rep is here when your meetings are here, what's being covered here. And then try to do some tutorials, like, okay, you need to make sure that you're kind. That's the, the first thing. You need to treat this person like they're your friend who's trying to act in your best interest. Like you cannot call people names. You cannot yell at them. You cannot threaten them. That's like the worst thing that you could do.
They won't listen. You don't get anywhere by behaving that way. You are, you, you, you give reason for them to call us terrorists because they're already calling parents terrorists.
Yeah. And I've had to learn some things by experience for sure. And I'm trying to pass those lessons on to other people and help other people out. Like, hey, don't make the same mistake I did. But I think it's been really awesome that I've been able to build a relationship with my school board rep or my house rep. So I can text them and ask them questions. And sometimes they text me and give me heads ups. Like, I'll get a text that says, hey, Nicole, just so you know, this policy is being covered next month. So you may want to let people know about it or you may be interested in knowing this. And that is so valuable. So that's, that's the whole reason we created Utah Parents United was to try to help establish a government of the people, by the people, for the people by getting our people involved.
Excellent, Nicole. That is so true because life is all about relationships. And once you have got a relationship with people in these positions and we can work together and sometimes they need to know that we're there and that we care and that we have power as citizens. And what you have done and many other organizations across our state, because they've created an organization, there are just like two or three people or one person, and they created an organization and they got members involved and those members let these legislators know. And that way the legislators realize they have someone that is holding them accountable. They're, they have someone that's informing them, but also holding them accountable. So that is really, really good advice. And of course, we always want to be above the fray. And we do live in a time when across the nation, parents that are being involved and that are speaking at school board meetings are being called terrorists. They are actually being arrested. We have a friend who was threatened with arrest, who was threatened with a no trespassing. Five children in Davis District was told he couldn't go on district grounds and accused of no crimes. He didn't, he wasn't, he didn't commit a crime. He didn't do anything wrong. He just made the superintendent, or not the superintendent, the Chair of this, the local school board. He, he made him uncomfortable and he did something he didn't like. And so he literally threatened him and, and lived for a year under a no trespassing with, with, it had no power to do that, no reason to do that to him. It's unbelievable.
Right. But that goes back to what Officer Cooper said, the code is vague so they can do whatever they want. And there are some people who do whatever they want because there's no accountability. There's no check or balance for that, for the school board member.
Exactly. So, okay, well, you've given us a really great list. You've given us some great ideas. So we encourage everyone to go to your school board meetings, get involved, go attend. If you might not want to speak your first time you go, you might want to just go and observe and watch and see. But then you can be prepared for the next time. Go, you don't have very much time. It's very short. But let your voice be heard. It's very important that they hear your voice and they know. And so another thing you can do is get a bunch of friends to go with you. There's power in numbers. Go and get your friends. But Nicole, you gave such great advice. We are heard and respected and listened to if we are respectful. If we listen to them and what they have to say, ask questions and then give our feedback. But being respectful is essential.
Yes.
To being effective.
Yes.
And it also keeps us in being able to continue to work with them. And it gives them no reason to call us terrorists, right?
Yes.
Which we're not. We're loving parents.
Yes. And we love this. And we love this and are.
Okay, so Nicole, what is next for you? Are you gonna continue working on this or do you have something else in the works?
Oh goodness, I, I couldn't even tell you.
Well, I know, Nicole. So I know that you are teaching your children the principles of the Constitution. That is something that you're working on and I just think that is awesome. And Nicole, busy, busy, busy mom. She's decided this is most important for her. And so when we're having our scripture study with our children, we can also teach the Constitution because they're one and the same.
Yes.
Nicole, thank you so much for joining us and remember, you are the guardians of your liberty. Thank you so much.